Welcome everyone to the January 30th City Council Work Session. Right off the bat, I will tell you I have a cold and as you can probably tell from listening to my voice, and so I'm in sort of slow gear today, just saying. Okay, first up, we have a work session on the South Willamette Street Improvement Plan. Assistant City Manager, nice to see you there.
Yeah, thank you. And John Reese is speaking at a United Way Emerging Leaders Luncheon, so that's why I'm here today. Actually excited about today's two work sessions because it's kind of diving right back into our priorities around Envision Eugene, and so we'll start with South Willamette, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris Henry to introduce our group and start the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to share details about the South Willamette Street Improvement Plan with you. I'm going to give some framing comments and then introduce, well, I'll just go ahead and introduce them, our consultant team, Transportation Engineer Scott Mansur of DKS Associates, and Ellen Tinity of Kijito, who is responsible for the public involvement process.
Well, I was going to ask you to speak up.
I have a cold as well.
Absorbs sound, point a lot.
I will do my best to speak up and try to read my notes. So, the South Willamette Street Plan, Street Improvement Plan, is exploring options for people to safely walk, bike, take the bus, and drive in an eight-block steady area of Willamette Street from 24th to 32nd Avenues. Today, Willamette Street is heavily used to meet, reach many popular destinations, yet it's uninviting to pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motorists alike. For years, many residents and business owners have shared complaints about the poor conditions on Willamette Street for walking and biking and the need to do something about it. The South Willamette Street Improvement Plan will develop a complete street design plan for an active transportation corridor providing for walking, biking, transit access, motoring, and business access, with the intent that it can be adopted and advanced as a capital improvement project for construction. The goal is to help South Willamette Street become a vibrant urban corridor accessible by bike, foot, car, and bus. The plan aims to support the existing businesses and the commercial district's vitality, to create a balanced multimodal transportation system, to further the city's planning efforts to identify compact growth and redevelopment opportunities, I'll say a little more about that, and foster a well-informed and involved community supportive of the plan. And that includes you here, so you're informed of the trade-offs and the consequences of some of the decisions that may have to be made and can help in that process. I promised the fire chief that I would also share their concerns with any changes on the street. They, Station 1 at the north and 15 at the south, and those two stations support one another, and they have serious concerns about how any reconfiguration of the street might affect fire and emergency medical services provided to the community, and so want to make sure you're aware of that as we consider alternatives. I said I'd say more about the land use and compact redevelopment. This transportation study supports the South Willamette Concept Plan, part of Envision Eugene, a way to envision growth in our community as we anticipate roughly 20 percent growth over the next 20 years. The South Willamette area is a pilot study and a corridor and district that has a lot of the services that create what is called a 20-minute neighborhood, where people can meet most of their daily needs within a 20-minute walk or bike ride. This transportation plan, again, supports that land use work, and we've been working collaboratively with our partners in the Planning and Development Department to develop a cohesive vision. This plan is more, the South Willamette Street Improvement Plan specifically, is looking at something perhaps in the next five years for construction. The South Willamette Concept Plan, the land use study, is more the 20-plus-year vision, but they need to be compatible and respect one another and work towards a common goal in the future. So with that, Scott Mansur is going to share more of the existing conditions to frame what the problem is, and then Ellen's going to talk about public involvement, and we'll talk about sort of the range of concepts that we're thinking that we'll be sharing later in February at a community forum.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Scott Mansur with DKS Associates, Project Manager, Assistant to City on this project and ODOT. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a baseline for the existing conditions out in the corridor, so I have a few PowerPoint slides I wanted to walk you through. For the Willamette Street Corridor, our study area is between 24th Avenue to 32nd Avenue. It's approximately a three-quarter mile segment. We have six study intersections. Those are the five existing signals between 24th and 32nd, and also the unsignalized access to Woodfield Station. You can see the land use that abuts the Willamette Street Corridor ranges from high-density residential, commercial, and mixed-use. The street cross-sections today, when I talk about the segment north of 29th, that is the top cross-section there. So if you're following along in your packet, I'm now looking at Slide 4, Sheet 4, in the bottom left-hand corner, and there's numbers on each of those slides. The top one, we have 42 feet of pavement today from curb to curb on the north segment, north of 29th. Then at 29th Avenue intersection, it widens to, you can see, for a center turn lane. That total right-of-way goes from 60 feet to 75 feet, and then the pavement also increases by 10 feet for that center turn lane. And once you get south of 29th, that curb section reduces down to 41 feet. So the main segments that we're looking at, other than the 29th intersection, range between 41 and 42 feet of asphalt, and then also we have 60 feet of right-of-way, which leaves about 9 and 9 and 1/2 feet for sidewalks on both sides of the road. For those of you who've driven the corridor on a regular basis, you know that there's a lot of driveways along this corridor. In fact, within our study area, there's more than 70 driveways. The access regulation set by the city is this is a high priority for regulating access. But the importance, you know, is this is an older road, that redevelopment has occurred, there's a lot of businesses along this, and a lot of access to those businesses, so. But when you look at, you know, a lot of arterials, 70 driveways in a three-quarter-mile segment is a pretty heavy access density. Bicycle facilities, today, there are bicycle facilities on Amazon Parkway to the east, and there is a striped bike lane south of 29th Avenue, but for the northern segment and through the 29th intersection, there are no bike facilities on street bike lanes at this time. Pedestrian facilities, those of you who walk this corridor realize that some of the sidewalks are as large as 9 feet, some are 5 feet. There's enough right-of-way for 9-foot sidewalks based on the current cross-section, but you'll notice that even in the areas when you have 9 feet, there's a lot of obstructions. There's some pictures there showing where you have utility poles on the curbside, hydrant on the inside. So when you actually talk about usable space, there's a lot of obstructions within the sidewalk that pose problems with the sidewalks, and there's also a lot of bicycles that actually use the sidewalks, and there's conflicts between pedestrians and bikes on the sidewalks. Now, I'll talk to you a little bit about the existing travel conditions. Along this corridor, we've done a lot of traffic counts, and those counts were collected once the University of Oregon was in session. This corridor carries about 2 percent trucks, so 2 percent of the traveling public on this is trucks accessing through and to businesses within the corridor. Today, this segment carries about 16,500 vehicles per day, so on a 24-hour period in a day, it carries about 8,000, a little over 8,000 vehicles per direction. The posted speed in this corridor is 25 miles per hour. When we did speed studies to look at what was the average speeds of traffic, the speeds that are used to design roads, which is called the 85th percentile speed, which is usually used to set the posted speed, those travel speeds, as you can see, are, you know, range from 29 to 31 miles per hour, so people are traveling about 4 to 6 miles per hour over the speed limit, which is very typical, and posted speeds are usually about 5 miles underneath that 85th percentile speed. Motor vehicle intersection operations, as you can see, the majority of the intersections in this corridor operate at a good level of service. Your level of service standard is D. In this area, at the 29th intersection, that's where you see the most congestion in this corridor. It's what we would call the bottleneck of this system. So it's operating at level of service D, so it's basically at, right at your threshold. You know, if you get additional traffic, or if you were to reduce capacity, it's going to be above that level of service standard that you've set. Safety and collision history, we've done a collision analysis, we looked at how many collisions were occurring in this segment, this three-quarter-mile segment. From 2008 to 2010, there was a total of 74 collisions, five of which had to do with motor vehicles or bikes, bike collisions. 42 percent of the collisions occurred at alleys or driveways, so a lot of those collisions are those conflict points with those 70 driveways that I talked about a little bit ago. So one of the things we do to determine where is this corridor at when it comes to, you know, a safety standpoint, we compare it to other similar facilities, other classified number of lanes, volumes, and what we did is we ran a collision rate on this corridor, and right now, it's at about 5.2 collisions per million vehicle miles traveled. And when you compare that to other similar facilities, the average is about 2.9. So we're looking at about twice the number of collisions along this corridor. So as we start talking about alternatives, we really want to be focused on what can we do to make this facility safer. The good thing, though, there was no fatalities along this corridor. And usually when you start getting facilities with posted speeds around 25, you start to see your fatalities really drop off, which is a good thing.
What's PDO?
I'm sorry. Thank you. So of those 74 collisions, 55 percent had injuries, so when there was a collision, somebody required medical care. On the PDO, that was property damage only, meaning there was damage to the cars, but those that were traveling in that collision were not injured. Thank you. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the street design elements. We're now in the process of putting alternatives together to take to the public to get their feedback, but some of the design elements that we've, first slide I want to talk about is complete streets, and when we talk about complete streets, we really want to make sure that as we're considering the different users of the corridor, that we come up with alternatives that provide for all modes of travel. And so we're really focused on these alternatives, providing alternatives that meet the needs for all the modes of travel. One of the things also is the desire to improve the aesthetics, and at the same time, you can also deal with some of the environmental issues of stormwater. So one of the things we'll be looking at is, you know, implementation of street trees, stormwater treatments, and other aesthetics to make this corridor look better, and also deal with some of the stormwater and federal regulations. This one, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, I already talked a little bit, it's just, again, as you're looking at the motor vehicle lanes, there's 26,000 vehicles a day on this corridor, 16,500 vehicles a day on this corridor, so you have a lot of traffic. And as we talk about, you know, all the different modes, we need to continue to also move traffic. So today, you have four travel lanes in the north segment, and it widens to five lanes at 29. So again, as we look at balancing the system, also, you know, considering the needs of the existing motor vehicles on that corridor. Center turn lane, some of the alternatives will look at center turn lanes. They provide a good benefit for getting traffic out of the flow to turn into driveways. As we know, there's a lot of driveways, so that would create, remove a lot of conflict points between through traffic. Also, a center turn lane, one of the benefits of a center turn lane on one end of the street will be for the side street traffic. It actually, they're allowed by law to use the center turn lane to turn out of driveways and then merge, so you don't have to merge, drive across both lanes. You can pull into the center turn lane and then merge into traffic. So, one of the things, and also, as you look at center turn lanes, it really reduces the rearing collisions along the corridor, so this is another, one of the safety considerations as we look at reducing the collisions along this corridor. Traffic control, there's numerous signals, there's five signals in this corridor today, and one of the other options that we are looking at is the potential for roundabouts. Roundabouts have a lot, again, as we're talking about reducing the collisions along the corridor, there's a lot of data out there that shows that when you install roundabouts, you can reduce the intersection collisions, especially injury collisions. Sometimes you can see a similarity in collisions between roundabouts and signals, but the injuries significantly decrease based on all those speeds traveling through the roundabout. So we're going to be looking at different traffic control options in these alternatives. Bikeways, our alternative is going to look at striping bike lanes on the facility. Some other options would be cycle tracks or buffered bike lanes, as we're looking at how to provide facilities on street for cyclists. Other options that we've heard too from the community is alternative bike routes and providing, for those that don't feel comfortable cycling on Willamette Street, having other parallel facilities on Oak or Portland Street that you might feel more comfortable riding with your child on it. So some of the alternatives is going to look at using parallel routes for cycling. Pedestrian crossings, with the center turn lane, also provide some options for mid-block, maybe median, or pedestrian enhancements to make it easier to cross this facility to get between businesses on both sides of the facility. Sidewalk width, as I showed you today, it ranges from 5 to 9, where the city's minimum width, desire for the facility would be 10, 10 feet. So as we, we're going to be looking at alternatives that increase the sidewalk width and provide as much available space for pedestrians. Transit amenities, as we start looking at different alternatives, having bus pullouts or shelters and other amenities to make transit attractive and provide access to the transit services along this corridor will be something that we'll be looking at and how we implement that along the corridor. And then finally, driveway consolidation. There's a lot of opportunities to work with business owners to actually eliminate a lot of the driveways along that corridor without impacting businesses. You know, some of the businesses may have four driveways to the system, and by the city and the business owner partnering together, you may have some opportunities to increase parking in their parking lot, to relay out their circulation while at the same time closing a couple of accesses, which is going to reduce the collisions along the corridor, reduce the conflict points. So again, that's some of the things that we're going to be working with and kind of identifying some of the safety improvements with driveways. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ellen.
Thanks, Scott. Just so I can see you when I was speaking to you. So, we have provided the summary of the first public forum and a list of, a complete set of all the comments that Chris has received, and you have been reading the letters to the editor and the registered guard, and there, so you already have a pretty good sense of what the public feedback is. I just want to say that that's, what you're seeing there is, gives you a good range of what we're hearing as well. The public participation has been, as you know, very robust. Our first meeting was 170, we're preparing for up to 300 at our next meeting, and I want to say that the public has been generally extremely thoughtful and able to think about other people's perspectives than their own. So I am very pleased with that, so that people are seeing the big picture and thinking about pedestrians, cyclists, cars, businesses, and not simply taking the "I got mine" club point of view to this, which is very positive, and I think will be supportive of the process that you'll end up having to do of finally making a selection. Also, your staff, Chris Henry, has done an exemplary job of responding to all comments, responding in a thoughtful way, a respectful way, and a timely way, and that also helps build goodwill. Whether you're agreeing or disagreeing or providing facts that may contradict their personal opinion, it helps that somebody is responding to all comments, and it's taking a lot of time because there's so many comments. And Chris, you're doing a great job, so thank you very much. It serves the whole process. So, the process itself, it started with some interviews we had with groups. We have three large public meetings. One, we've already had, which was laying out some of the information that Scott just shared with you. The second will be on an array of alternatives in which we'll be collecting feedback, and the final is to refine a preferred alternative out of, you know, in the narrowing process. When we think about the public, we've been thinking in terms of interests and trying to make sure that we are balancing the input that we're getting so that we are here, we're meeting with property owners and business owners on the corridor, we're meeting with cyclists of varying stripes, those who would ride in any weather, in any circumstances, and those that would like to ride their bikes but need certain conditions to feel comfortable doing that. We're talking with pedestrians, we're talking with people with disabilities, we're talking with freight drivers, and we're talking with through users who are coming through from the South Hills, and we try and keep, make sure that we're hearing all of those perspectives in any time that we're actually asking a question or presenting information. So we also have four times in the process where we're checking in with a smaller group of stakeholders in smaller settings where we're allowing them to hear each other's points of view, and we're also using that to help flush out, like if our materials don't communicate well, or if there's problems that people who use it all the time can share with us prior to large public meetings or it getting in the newspaper or TV. So that's also part of the process. We also walked the corridor and handed out a letter and Chris's business card to every business that we could get access to, and invited them to contact Chris directly to give input on the alternatives from that very practical point of view as an owner or an employee on the corridor. And so what we've heard, one thing is, in general, I'll tell you some things there's agreements on, that the sidewalk must be improved. Another is that the stormwater flooding situation must be improved, because as you know, there's very large, okay, I don't need to say anymore about that. Okay. And that the utilities, the space, both for aesthetic and space reasons, get the utilities out of there and move those, which Chris will address in a few minutes. And the last thing we've heard is, don't hurt the businesses. It has, you know, a wonderful mix of services that the community values very highly, from your animal vet to your dentist to your multiple grocery stores, your dry cleaner, you know, and so forth, and that that is the core of what a 20-minute neighborhood needs, so please don't mess with that. If we, this would be what people would say, if we could have good sidewalks, a separated bike lane, and good traffic flow, that's what we want. However, the reality is that this conversation in this moment, maybe not in 20 years, but in this moment, has a very restricted amount of right-of-way. So now we're up to the point of the conversation which is about trade-offs, and trade-offs reflect priorities and have different kinds of consequences. So in that conversation, which is just beginning now, we're just starting the trade-offs conversation, and it will go through the large community forum February 27th at South Eugene High School Cafeteria. The, what we're hearing in the beginning of the trade-offs conversation is, don't short-shrift the sidewalk environment because that is something that everyone uses and therefore is the most equitable piece of the entire right-of-way. That as far as bicycle access, yes, we'd love, everybody would like to have a separated lane that everybody could feel safe riding on, but if there's not enough right-of-way for that, then there is a sense that bike lanes on Willamette on the street itself is part of fairness, and it's part of convenience, you know, equity to the convenience to the stores and the route. And there's also a point of view from the bicycling community that parallel routes would serve well because there, with parallel routes with thoughtful connections and bike parking would serve well because it would be safer and more comfortable. So we're hearing different points of view from the cycling community, business perspective. We're hearing both yesterday, it's a long-awaited goal to make a more beautiful inviting street with, you know, narrowing the lanes and putting bike lanes on would be fine, and been waiting for that. And then on the other hand, we're hearing that it could snarl traffic and cause people to change their driving patterns, which would damage the businesses, and many of the businesses have regional customer bases. So the businesses in general are just also making us mindful that any kind of construction project, any paving at all, is, which they understand needs to happen and are supportive of, you know, to be thoughtful about how that's done, can it be done at night, various things like that, because that in itself is an impact to the business. And then the through users also have, I'm saying also, like the others, have multiple points of view and not a single point of view, so that you will hear, please make it less crazy. And that means fewer driveways, a center turn lane, bus pullouts, and calmer traffic so I can get through there without dodging. But it also means, they say, don't make it more crazy, and they're saying the same thing, don't make it more crazy by taking out a lane and thinking we're going to be able to handle, you know, aren't we going to have head-ons in a center turn lane with all those options for, that was the letter to the editor today, and anyway, how are emergency vehicles going to get through? So because there isn't a single position from any of these constituencies, that we would just like you to know that, that there are multiple positions within each of the constituency areas, and that's why it's very important that you're involved in the process and the decision.
And with that, I would like to hear any questions or concerns, and we can provide more information in a dialogue format with you. We formally plan to come back to you in the fall with a draft plan. We've heard what the community interests were, we're developing alternatives in response to those interests, and we're going to evaluate those alternatives at our next community forum February 27th, South Eugene High School in the cafeteria, and then narrow, 6 to 8 p.m. February 27th, and then we're going to narrow, say, half a dozen alternatives to a few, three. And it's at that point that we create a draft plan, and we get more detailed in the analysis, and that takes more time and money for our consultants and the team. And we'll probably have a check-in with you, either a memo form or maybe another work session, but it's in reflection, I'm thinking we should involve you in that process before we get to the very end.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the introduction, or at least getting us up to speed on everything. Thank you very much. What I'm going to do here is, we want to conclude this in about 15 minutes, I'm going to have a few things to say, and then I'm going to just go around the table and ask everybody to give you their input, and then we'll try to get it done in time to move into the next thing. So I appreciate that we're having, I just want to say this, I appreciate we're having a discussion about fire services at the front end and not at the back end, so I think that's really important. I am concerned, given some other experiences we have, that if we even consider a roundabout, that we have enough space for a roundabout, that we're not roundabouting on top of our roundabout, so that, so just want to say that. It's an interesting thing about counting traffic to me, because you're counting the traffic that exists, but there's a lot of traffic that wants to exist that isn't there yet because it isn't friendly to that kind of traffic, and that would, in my view, mean more pedestrian traffic and more bike traffic if we had the ability to have that. So it's an interesting sort of pull and tug about what's real now and what the real desire and use would be if it were fully usable. So it's kind of an interesting thing to think about from both sides. I know people want more buffered bike facilities, we've talked about that. My hope is that when you have this conversation, it isn't either on Willamette or parallel, but you might think about how you do both of those things in a way that actually, for those who can be in traffic, that you have some facility there where they can be there, and for those who want to protect it, when you offer them that alternative way to go. I think we would be in the wrong conversation if we tried to only have a choice between the two. And, let's see, I appreciate the public's being thoughtful about it, just want to bring up two things. I know you've heard this before, there are some examples, I think, what is it, Stone Street in Seattle, where they've done this sort of slowing down traffic, where you go slower to make everything move faster kind of thing, and maybe if we had some more examples for people to see, that they would. And the other thing that I just want you to think about, and I know it's been done sometimes elsewhere, is sometimes when you're making a major change to a street, which we're actually really talking about here, you model it out for a while and do sort of a pretend change, so to speak, where you use temporary things to show people how it would function, you can alter it and learn about how it would function before you actually put the final product in place. And I know that's been done in some places as well, just something for us to think about, because I think a lot of our fear is about what we don't know, so if we can create a situation where people get to try things out before we actually make it so, then maybe some of that fear goes away, or we find out they're right. So, okay, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate the work very much, but I have to say, all due respect and all, I couldn't disagree with the mayor more on the idea of...
Oh, my gosh.
I know, I just, I couldn't disagree more. With the idea of slowing down Willamette Street under the circumstances, that seems to me the capacity is the problem. And Scott, when you mentioned page 13 in the presentation here, you presented the idea of a complete street design and balancing uses as if it were an advantage or a good thing, and you didn't tell us why. I'm, I'm wondering why exactly it's a valuable thing to add bike lanes to the complete part of Willamette as opposed to having a discussion about whether that's a good idea or a bad idea to separate them out in the first place. I think we're kind of taking that as an assumption without the conversation first.
Perhaps that's more, more my response. The pedestrian and bicycle master plan, getting back to a point, the mayor made, identified parallel routes, bicycle boulevards as well as bike lanes on Willamette Street. It didn't say how to do that, but identified that as an aspiration. And so we're trying to figure out how actually to do that. There's, in your agenda item summary, quite lengthy list of the policy guidance that says why we do this. And that's, that's really to answer your question is, we as, as a community and we set, set the policy, we're, we're staff, we're trying to help implement the policy that, that we recommend, but, but is ultimately endorsed by this body that says equal access to, to mobility in our community by foot, bicycle.
Well, I don't want to travel down that road if you'll forgive the pun. Yeah, the pun, but as to whether or not there's equal, anyway, I don't want to do that. I believe that it's probably a wiser idea as we look at these levels of traffic and the more that we've talked about with Invision Eugene of, the more urban compactness that we have in our community over time, the more people that are traveling on some of these major thoroughfares. The things that we do, in my opinion, should add capacity so that we don't have accidents, we don't have a, a stronger likelihood of traffic backed up for blocks and blocks and blocks and people getting frustrated. And I think that probably plays into the, the situation of more and more accidents as well. So I'm, I, I love the idea that perhaps we look at separating bike traffic out off onto Oak or off onto other thoroughfares, but to try and incorporate them even more and, and slow down Willamette Street seems counterintuitive to me.
The way I'm going to do this is because actually these two guys are in the queue, I'm just going to start, I'm going to start with you, I'm just going to go right around the table. Okay?
I want my full three minutes.
Your time to really think about it.
Just some, some, some quick notes I jotted down. First note I jotted down was balance. I appreciate the fact you're trying to achieve a balance because this, this will not be successful unless we're constantly balancing a variety of different competing interests. And, and I know you're trying to get there and that, that I think will be a key element because that tracks into the notion, those of us that had the opportunity to go through some exercises with Santa Claus, were able to learn that we often go into situations with our worst outcomes in mind and that really it's better to try to approach these situations, not imagining the worst outcome, which is I think what you'll confront. You will, you'll go in there and people will tell you their imagined worst outcome. And that's absolutely fine, but we can't plan around worst outcomes. We have to try to imagine what our best outcome is and then work toward that and figure what that, what that balance is going to be. I do know, Chris and I worked on the Bailey Hill project and I know that there's a lot of differences between Bailey Hill Road and South Willamette, but there's also a lot of striking similarities that we could learn from in terms of some things that were done there, which were intuitively worst outcomes to folks, but actually turned out to be positive. This get, the one for me specifically was around the notion of speed versus flow. That sometimes you can improve flow without necessarily having an impact on speed. And so you may want to say, what is the thing that will most improve the flow of traffic? So you move more cars through the area at an optimal speed. And, and that sometimes seems counterintuitive, but it's figuring out what is the best way to do that. And I think the focus in on turn lanes is, is an obvious one. That is, that is where a lot of that occurs. Another one is the issue around infrastructure. If we want to try to increase capacity within the existing infrastructure, that's a real challenge. But if you talk about increasing easements or widening streets, we all know where that conversation goes. That really puts worst outcomes into overdrive. So we want to try to figure out what's the best optimal balance between what physically we have to work with and what's the best way to improve flow. I remember years ago, working in the Parks and Recreation Business, we talked a lot about transportation corridors, how it's not a traffic, you really need to think about it in terms of transportation. That includes pedestrian, bikes, cars, buses, rail, whatever, whatever goes within that transportation corridor. You do want to take into account what the percentage of the different kinds of transportation, but ultimately when you think in terms of the future, you want to think of it in terms of, as, as an entire unit and how to approach that intelligently. In some cases, I know bike traffic in many cases wants to be off-street, but sometimes for the sake of a transportation corridor, you have to figure out what works best. I'm really interested, I'm really open to see what comes out of this process, but I do think there's a real effort to figure out what our, what our competing interests are and find the right balance.
George.
Well, first of all, I think there's a lot of public outreach going on in this, this project for a small of an area we're talking about. And I, I do appreciate that because the people that you're dealing with are the people that are going to have to be using this stretcher road. So I think it's great that we're going through this process. And I also want to thank you for considering the fire department's concerns ahead of time. A number of years ago, I believe it was in Meridian, Idaho, we were back, I was back visiting my brother in Boise and I was reading the paper, and they put in all these roundabouts. And then the fire trucks got sent on calls and they couldn't make it around the roundabouts. They weren't big enough. So there was a big, a big disconnect there and then they had to go and redo all the roundabouts, not only in size, but on weight capacities also. So that's, that's very important if they decide to do the, the roundabout way. And then as far as combining the, both the parallel bike routes and on-street bike routes on Willamette, I think that needs to be really carefully looked at because when you start having both, I think there's an expectation, not only from the, the bicycle community, but also from the, the motoring community as to what they're, what they're going to see when they're driving down the road or pedaling down the road. So I don't know if combining them both is a good idea or maybe just looking at the parallel routes to get them completely off of Willamette Street for the, you know, the conflicts. So that, that I haven't really come down on, on one side or the other, but I think that needs to be carefully looked into. And then the, the crosswalk safety islands with the flashing lights that they have on River Road. I see Mike shaking his head. I, I think that is a vast improvement over what we've had in the past in some of the areas. I know like over in Springfield and Harlow Road there by Le Schwaabs, they've got one that actually changes colored lights. So when somebody's getting ready to cross or in the crosswalker. So I think that's important, especially in, in the higher areas where you have a lot more of the, the commercial properties. And then you briefly said something about the conflicts in the, the current sidewalks with the utility poles and moving the utility, but you never really addressed it any farther than that. Is that going to be the city's responsibility or is it going to be something that we're going to go into conjunction with E-Web? Or are they going to, are they looking at undergrounding it or what's the, the status on that?
We've, we've included the Eugene Water and Electric Board, representative on our technical advisory committee for the project, and they've developed some high-level cost estimates and alternatives to relocate and underground utilities. It's very expensive. It's a few to multiple million dollars to do that. Plus there's a private cost for the individual property owners to reconnect to the, the new service. There's, there's benefits to undergrounding utilities, but it comes at a very high cost. And that's something that this body and the E-Web Board can, can discuss. And we're looking for a champion to, to find the money.
And the public all wants that.
Yeah.
That's a unifying point.
Fix the sidewalks and get the utilities out of there, but we'll still have to put...
And the stormwater.
And fix the stormwater. And we can, we can do the stormwater and we can, we can do the sidewalks when we get all the money together to do that. That's something we can do.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add. Counselor Taylor and I met with the whole staff yesterday for an hour and a half and had a really great conversation and got most of our questions answered. And I like, I like the approach and I like the schedule. It's pretty thorough. Looking forward to the options.
Thanks, George. Greg.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm, I'm really impressed with the amount of work that's gone into this and also too, you can expect a high level of interest from the residents around that area and their participation. There's a couple of things that, that I wanted some answers to as far as questions because over the last 20 some odd years, I've traveled through that corridor for a variety of reasons, whether it was to ferry children to school or to, you know, get back and forth to work or just to shop over there when I needed to go pick something up on the way coming down from work or going up to work. I didn't see a lot in this in terms of the collateral effect of the east-west traffic on 29th going into 30th on the east side and then flowing into 29th going up Lincoln and Washington on the west side. I think that the scope and the impact and effect of whatever changes are made over there, whatever changes are considered, will have a significant impact on, you know, a surrounding area that's a bit larger than what I'm seeing here. Because again, at various points during the day, that intersection is really, really jammed up. And then you go back off to the side streets and even further as you go Hilliard and a lot of people going back and forth to LCC. So that's one issue that, that I'd like to see kind of fleshed out a little bit more. I'm, I'm impressed with what you're looking at with EMS. I'd like to learn a little bit more about what the transit amenities are going to look like, because again, you've got transit routes that are flowing through there that is servicing the south Willamette area going both up Donald and up Willamette Street. And timing is a big factor. I know with the transit agency, particularly with regard to some of the tight timetables that we've got and the interlining that we do for people who are trying to transfer to other routes downtown when they get downtown. So I'm concerned about that, you know, potential bunching of, of traffic and then the, the backup and, and the, you know, subsequent time problems that that leaves for buses trying to get both into town and then back out of town. So I would like you guys to kind of consider those two major issues I think are, are going to be resonating there.
Betty.
Thank you. I feel pretty well informed, having heard Chris Henry at City Club and also in a briefing yesterday, but I want to say that Chris did an excellent job at City Club. Several people remarked to me that he, they liked the way he treated the audience with respect. I think that's an important thing as we, because people are scared and, and they need to be, their, their concerns need to be treated with respect and I'm glad that's happening. I had a couple of questions. Could we use telecom money for the undergrounding? We did that once for something. And I think that's something to consider. And then my other question, just to, I used to have five traffic signals and I know the one at 24th, 25th, 29th, where are the other two?
32nd, 27th. And then we're also...
27th? Oh, that's right.
And we're also going to analyze the, the access to Woodfield Station, the driveway there.
Well, there might be another. I think we can't, they, they really help a lot. And I, I hope, as I've already said to some people, I, I hope that we could find good parking places for bicycles. Some people have, some bicyclists even have suggested that if you had, if this becomes a walkable street and if at each end you had good, secure bicycle parking, then it wouldn't be so essential for the bikes to necessarily ride on this street if, if they were on an adjoining street and could find, but parking is one of the, to me, when I've ridden, when I ride, it's park, it's leaving the bike, that's a big problem because there are bike thieves everywhere. But it's good work and I look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Alan.
I think the question, do you want to get rid of the utility poles on Willamette is only half a question. The other half of the question is just as important and maybe more important, which is, would you be willing, do you still want to have that if you know it costs millions of dollars and it would cause your E-Web rates to increase? Then I think you'd get a different answer. It literally is extremely expensive to do that, which is why it's not often done. And so I'm a little skeptical about solving that problem in the short term. Is there, how does MX, potentially an MX route on Willamette fit into all of this?
Their potential route is on Amazon Parkway, not on Willamette itself. No, we wouldn't go up there.
I'm interested in, in the parallel bike routes with the knowledge that it might be a zig and a zag that you can't, because Portland doesn't go all the way through. There is the stairs at the end of Portland, 28th and, and Portland that goes into the parking lot of the Woodfield Station, but that's kind of, that's difficult to negotiate. Is there a fix to that potentially?
There could be. We'll, we'll look at that. It's a, it's an imperfect solution at this point.
Like in, I know in, in parts of like Los Angeles, they do a little tram, electric tram that gets people up and down that.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a groove for the, for the bikes in the stairs now already, but we can look at enhancements there. It might be a separate project, independent of, of what happens with the pavement preservation work, anyway.
Because that puts you right into that parking lot and access to all that shopping. But it'd be difficult if you had a trailer or something like that on your bike. If you did the parallel routes with the access to Willamette, still have the problem of riding on the sidewalks, which is currently illegal, right?
It is legal to ride on the sidewalk, except in the downtown core where bicycles or skateboards are excluded.
Okay, so it's not illegal to ride on Willamette.
It's okay to ride on sidewalks. It's okay to ride on I-5.
Good parallel, actually. Okay, so riding on sidewalks isn't a problem, it's just the space and the poles and things like that. But so, and talking about bike parking, are we talking about publicly created bike parking or bike parking at businesses, in front of businesses? Oh.
Yeah, I mean, we'll look at all terms that have, you know, within the, the sidewalk area have some bike parking or it's kind of teaming and partnering with businesses as well.
Yeah, the public right of way is very constrained. We have, we have 60 feet now and between the curbs of 42 feet is the roadway and then only nine feet for sidewalks. It's very limited opportunities for, for those kinds of furniture elements.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at, which is how do you put in public bike parking when you only have, you're very constrained, dramatically constrained there. Okay, thanks.
Claire.
All right. Thanks so much for your work and presentation. So in my day job, I'm the executive director of the Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth and we work to advocate for policies and projects that are going to combat childhood obesity. So bike pedestrian projects are a, a real focus for us as an organization. So I just wanted to put that out there because you might be seeing communication from me in my role with Elche. Our board of directors may weigh in on potential projects and advocate for one to be brought forward. So I met this morning with some folks who are involved with this from the bicycle perspective and they are definitely advocating for bike lanes on Willamette. But I appreciated the mayor's suggestion that if that really rose to the top as being part of the plan, that having these other alternative, good bike access on slightly calmer streets for folks of different abilities would be a real benefit. I think as we think about, oh, and also we talked about, I encourage them to think about the bike parking piece as well as maybe a place for some community partnerships with folks in the community who construct bike racks already and working with businesses to find ways that they might fund that with some kind of grant of some kind. When we're talking about trade-offs, you know, I do think we need to think about, you know, we, Chris, Counselor Pryor was talking about fear of the worst outcome. There's also the vision of the best outcomes, which might be that if we can create some, a more calm atmosphere on that street while folks are still able to get through there in a timely way, that will actually increase customers to the area because more folks will be comfortable walking through there and riding their bikes as well as traveling in cars or by bus. So I'm glad you addressed the drainage piece that came up in the conversation today. Even though the... I, even though the rates of, um, travel through there are just five miles an hour higher than the posted speed limit, which is pretty average, it always feels like everyone tenses up as they approach that part and we're all just ready for some kind of confrontation or need to get around each other. So I think anything in this redesign that can create that feeling that we can just go through there close to the speed limit and we're all going to get where we need to go without, uh, bumping into each other, I think that'd be very important, um, and would help if people feel like they could walk on the sidewalk and not have, um, this proximity to fast-moving vehicles right there. Um, my one que- well, one question was on this slide ten, you've got this chart, uh, but no explanation of what A, B, C, D means and how they're applied. Someone could point that-
So that, that, the A, uh, that would be the level of service, um, of intersection. So when you think about an intersection, how it operates, the way it's measured is a level of service, which is similar to a report card, like your child would get a report card, A through F. And so A would be low delays, uh, F would be delays when you start seeing significant congestion where people are very uncomfortable traveling through that. So your standard is D, level of service D.
D?
Yes.
Is that me?
Yeah, I, I still understand.
Well, it means it's, it's fairly, fairly congested, fairly, um-
Oh, currently getting a D in that.
What, what we're allowing in the downtown core is, is a level of service E or, um, uh, you know, you might, you might have to wait more than one signal cycle to get, to get through the intersection. This, this project, we're looking at a multimodal level of service, not just, uh, measuring automobile delay, but how does the facility serve pedestrians, transit users and, and people on bicycles? And that's unique. We haven't done that in the, in the city yet.
Well, that's fantastic.
And if we, if we do nothing, um, on Willamette Street, there is a modest amount of, uh, of automobile traffic growth that we expect and the Twenty-Ninth and Willamette intersection is currently at our standard and, and you, we'd anticipate more congestion there. So even doing nothing, we may still have a, a policy choice to make to, uh, allow even higher levels of congestion than we currently do. And that's, that's one of the trade-offs, uh, you know, sort of like the, what happened on Twenty-Ninth when we added bike lanes there. There's, there's a consequence to making some of the changes and that's part of our role here to balance that.
Help, help you understand the measurement of level of service. So like level of service A, typically, uh, the average delays of all the vehicles using it, uh, would be about ten seconds, less than ten seconds. So when you're traveling through intersection level of service A, there's very little delay to try in public. When you start getting to D and E, that's when you're seeing fifty-five, almost a minute of delay. So you're going to sit in the left turn lane. The average vehicle in that whole intersection is going to, you know, some may sit there for thirty seconds, others may be there for a minute and a half, but the average of all those vehicles is around a minute.
Great, thanks for that. Um, if you use this chart in other presentations, it'd be helpful if you had a little explanation next to it so you don't have to go through that.
Thank you.
Um, and then, oh, all right. I have one more question.
So, um, sorry. So I'm, uh, in order to get one round, we're ten minutes past the time we hope to be, um, be done, so I'm going to call it to a halt right now, but I'm sure you would have certainly accept and appreciate other questions.
Yes, you can contact me directly and we can make arrangements to meet together with the consultant team if you wish.
Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to try to do something really quick here-
All right.
-before we get to the next thing and then we're going to, I know that you're, you're going to say, geez, we're hardly going to get into this MUFTI discussion before it's over and I know that's true.
Can I, I'd like to make a comment before we start the, that presentation of the MUFTI, staff's presentation. Is that the next thing?
We're going to do something real quick in between.
Number two.
I know that's your take. Go ahead, Glenn.
Um, what's being handed out to you is a copy of the minutes from your December tenth meeting. Um, there's an ambiguity in the motion that you passed related to, um, the appointment of somebody to fill a vacancy and I just need to know which you intended. If you look on that page, under number one, the second line, it says that a vacancy would be filled, uh, by a candidate from the pool of active applicants. Um, when I drafted this for George, what I didn't realize, um, is that the way the pool system is set up is there's an open recruitment, people apply. The recruitment is closed and you deal with the selection of people at that time, but then other people can keep sending in applications, or at least other people have sent in applications. And so the question for you is when you adopted this motion to fill a vacancy, did you intend that the people who could fill a vacancy are only those who applied during the active recruitment period? Or did you intend it's people who applied prior to the time that there was a vacancy? So it would be during the active incru- recruitment and then in the after that?
And my understanding from what I thought I heard at the time is that you wanted it to be constrained to the people who applied during the active recruitment time. Is there anybody who disagrees with that? Alan?
One question about that. So people that had applied before that, do they have to reapply during the active recruitment period or is their application brought into that next, uh, active recruitment period?
This is just dealing with the-
Interim, interim appointments.
-filling of the vacancies and so if I understand what, what the mayor just said and what I thought I saw, head nods, is the intention for filling a vacancy is that the person selected from the people who applied during the active recruitment.
And that you actually interviewed.
So, the, the question I had is, so what if someone applied right before that window? Is, are they considered part of that active pool?
They would not be.
Okay.
All right.
But they had to reapply.
Right. That's all I needed, thank you.
All right.
Do we tell them they need to reapply?
Yes, I think we should tell them that they need to reapply.
We should.
That doesn't mean I have to reapply, does it?
All right, so we're moving on to the next item and, and George, you wanted to say something?
Yes, this is almost a point of order. I'm, I'm sorry, I really have to object, Assistant Manager, to the way this meeting has been structured. My approved Mu- my re- approved work session request from last June made no mention of Envision Eugene and made no mention of all these other things. It was to directly look at our program, compare it with other cities' programs, specifically Portland. So it gets tacked on to the Willamette Street Plan, that's important. And now there's this matter and then there's discussion. So now we're down to one-third of a work session. We're down to a third. If staff does their presentation, that's fifteen or twenty minutes. We have ten minutes to respond one round. That's not even enough for one round of comment to the presentation. And, and yet, I mean, and, and everybody knew that my vote to temporarily suspend the program, stop accepting new applications pending review, we're supposed to vote on that today. That's going to generate one or two rounds of discussion. So if you, I've seen this happen before and I have to strongly object to this because this is the second, at least the second time that I know of, uh, discussion on a very important matter has been constrained and limited and, and taken down side paths that had nothing to do with the original intent of the work session. And I'm, I'm really getting kind of tired of this. So I don't even count this as a, personally, I don't even count this as a work session. This is like the prelude to a real work session. So now we have to make up our minds. Are we going to let staff go ahead and do this presentation and then have several, you know, a couple rounds on that and then get to the vote and have several rounds on that? That means we go past the work session time barrier and councils are reluctant to do that. If councils are willing to stay an extra fifteen minutes at least, I'll accept that. But this, this kind of meeting planning is, in my view, has got to stop. It's just, we need to schedule at least one or two more real work sessions, hour and a half each on this. This is a hugely important subject.
Well, we're not hitting the stuff I want to talk about on either.
I agree, I think we should consider this a prelude to a work session.
I agree.
Everybody's heads nodding around.
We'll just, we'll schedule another one. I think, you know, when we met the last time and you were discussing your most, motion, I had mentioned that we had placed this on the item. It was one of the items that was coming up on the calendar before the motion was there as kind of one of our next steps around Envision Eugene. So we always anticipated that we would be coming back, talking about incentives and that MUFTI would be one of the first because there was, um, concern and a request for the work session. We can schedule as many work sessions as we need to. I think you'll see in the next steps that our short-term next steps are to continue coming back to council to look at criteria for how you might want to revise the program.
I think the concern right now, as I understand it, is that yes, uh, we do need to have a really, uh, in-depth discussion about MUFTI and probably other ti- kinds of incentives that we use to try to, um, make things happen in our, in our community. But I think what George is concerned about is if we don't make a deci- in, in overt decision about whether we're going to put a hold on the MUFTI program, then people will continue to think that they can't apply and justifiably so. And you haven't given them a most, a clear message that they shouldn't. And so he is worried that we're giving a bad piece of information to people that they should spend the time and money to apply for our MUFTI program while we ha- while we are yet making our decision about what that's going to be. Is that-
That, that captures most of it, yeah. That's also a good summation.
So, I think that's the, I think that's the immediate concern that he has. And the only thing I can offer at this meeting about that is you could choose to use this time, should you want to, to put out a motion about that and see what-
I already have, I already have.
It's on the table.
It got delayed, it got moved to this meeting and it's not even on the agenda. This is what I'm, why I'm objecting to the structure of this meeting. We need to discuss that motion more and we can't have the staff's presentation and then the inevitable questions and I've got a whole bunch. And, and then do the vote. It's, it's not, it's not, it's not going to work out unless we want to stay an extra half an hour, which I'm willing to do.
Um, so, George, I apologize. Part of that was my fault. I should have let staff know that on the agenda itself, on the, the yellow page, we should have had the motion and I've just been dealing with the new revenue stuff. In fact, because that motion was postponed to this meeting and I would have said it at some point, um, the council needs to address that motion.
Right now.
Uh, well, you can either do it first or you can do it after the staff presentation, although the staff presentation really deals with things other than whether to suspend, but you do need to address that motion-
At this meeting?
At this meeting.
All right.
And you can either vote it up or down, you can postpone it, you can table it, but you do have to deal with it today.
All right. So it's on the table?
Uh, it's on the, yeah, nobody has to remake the motion or move to take it from the table. As the presider, you can decide whether you're do- you're dealing with it, you know, in the next five seconds or you're dealing with it fifteen minutes from now.
I'm going to deal with it now.
And then it's, then it's on the table-
On the table.
And the motion is to suspend the program while you engage in this, um, review.
And Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not interested in, in postponing it while we do the review, as I had said the other day. I'm interested in doing a more thorough review than what was brought forward. I agree with George. I think this requires at least one work session on this topic alone. I appreciate and saw the email that Alan put forward with his thoughts about what ought to be discussed. I have several myself, I did not submit them yet, but will. And, and I, it's, it's interesting even, I, I felt the same way that George did when I read through the materials, that my requests about, uh, kind of the, the premise for having a MUFTI in the first place is, one, to have some input over what kind of things get built, whether it's a LEED certified building of one nature or another, but it's also a response to the regulatory environment and we're not having that discussion, that if we were making it easier to build things, it would be less expensive to build things and thus not necessary. And I appreciate the fact that we could put the, the conversation in that context as well. Thank you.
And then I, I'm trying to think if it was mixed. I think it was Greg and then I think it was Alan.
Yeah, the fact, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, for the last, um, the twenty-some-odd days, I've been trying to dig into MUFTI and wrap my head around it and, um, it reminds me of a, a statistic class I took when I was in college. Uh, but, um, to, to make a long story short, um, I, I want to, uh, support, uh, Councilor Brown's motion because I think that there's a time right now where we need to be able to, um, adequately assess what this program is, is for and what the impact it, it has on, uh, development of this nature. I think that, um, this either-or situation where, you know, a, a developer comes in and says, I, you know, I need this, I need this tax abatement or we're not going to develop, um, doesn't serve the public in the ways that we need to be served and, uh, protect the, and guard the, um, uh, the interest of, uh, our citizens. I think that we need to have a more sophisticated approach to our MUFTI program and one where, you know, we're going to get some value, well, I mean, we, I mean, the city gets some value back from a program that we, um, designed. Because to me, from what I have seen and what I've looked at in the various documents, the program is flawed, okay? And, um, I think that if there's an existing, uh, several existing, you know, applications in the pipeline, that we don't change the rules at this point and try to stop those, but we evaluate those of the merits of those, um, uh, applications that are in the pipeline. I do think that it does call for, um, you know, a suspension of, you know, going forward after that with any other things that come about because, again, um, I, I think that we have a very flawed, uh, model and I think that we need to change that model and I think that we need to work, um, um, very diligently around shaping and crafting another model that really makes sense, uh, for, you know, the, the folks of Eugene. I'm just not a, you know, right now, um, giving a property tax exception with, uh, the current financial state that we're facing, um, you know, people are not going to be too pleased with that.
Glenn?
Um, I just want to clarify that the motion that the council is acting on now is not to actually suspend the program, it's to give the direction to the city manager to schedule the public hearing on the ordinance that would suspend the program. If you pass today's motion, we'll bring back to you an ordinance, um, at the first public hearing day, which I think is February eighteenth or nineteenth, and then you could take action after that. So today doesn't actually suspend it, it gives direction to the manager to bring it back.
Okay, I'm confused, but I'll talk to you later about that.
Sorry.
Alan?
Um, I concur and support what Counselor Brown was talking about, um, and, and as, as well as suspension, I mean, we kind of already blew it because the, 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 uh, hub project on Franklin already submitted an application and we're in the midst of having conversation about changing all the rules on them. That is not the way to do business. You don't say, yeah, come on, let's put it in your application, we're going to change the rules, but put it in your application. So you don't really know what you're going to get potentially at the end. Um, uh, so I don't think that's the appropriate way to do business. Uh, I, I, I like, uh, Counselor Clark's suggestion about how we can change this so that we can make development a little more streamlined and cheaper, uh, uh, and having that conversation. And then I also have, uh, sent out an email today about specific items that I wanted to see included in the conversation as we move forward about potential modifications. I think most of these have come up at different times, um, and there, there are five of them and I like to add a sixth one. The, uh, whether or not the city should share the upside after a nine or ten percent rate of return, that's what Portland does. Um, I've talked to, uh, at least one developer that said that's not, that's not a, a big deal, makes sense. Uh, whether or not the MUFTI program should have a requirement that there be a LEED silver or better type building, uh, adding what, uh, Counselor Evans was talking about, which is community benefit agreements beyond just the, the benefits of the jobs in the building and infrastructure and the potential property taxes, but something beyond that bolsters the public interest component of this, this, uh, MUFTI. If we are talking about MUFTI as a thing that makes a project go, there should and only go because we gave them the MUFTI, then there should be some reciprocal community benefit to be had beyond just the building and the jobs. And then four, uh, whether or not it should promote just low-income housing or some kind of mixed use of housing or whether or not we don't want to have any more student housing in, in the core areas, uh, is another question. And then establishing an annual rolling budget. Uh, other communities have this where they say, we, we allow MUFTI to go, but we only have this much that we're allowing at any one time to be in there. We have, we're, we don't really know how much MUFTI, we, we haven't totaled it, but some communities say, okay, we want a million dollars worth of MUFTI per year allowable at any one time and, uh, there's only a new MUFTI available if one of them at the end of the ten years stops and there's that allocation freed up. Uh, that, that's another idea. And then the, the sixth one I wanted to do is, it relates to the, the BUT-4 test. I have no confidence in that test. Every time it's come up, it's passed. Every time it's come up, it's passed, so I don't, whether or not, we need to have that be a more explicit test that makes sense to me and other councilors so that we can--
George is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the reason I brought this work session up is because, you know, it's, I believe, and I know some of my fellow councilors share this feeling, that several of our recent MUPD approvals, there was really a, the lack of rigorous negotiations to, to achieve true concrete community benefits. I mean, you know, council majority even granted them MUPD approval, and they didn't even score 100 points. They didn't even score the, and yet they were still granted the approval. And, you know, we started the program in 1978. Broadway Snyder was the first applicant, first recipient. And, you know, what worked well back then doesn't necessarily work today. It's very common for, I mean, we do it all the time, we've been at all the time since I've been on council. We've reviewed ordinances, we've reviewed codes relating to downtown and other areas of town, and we've changed them. It's, it's not uncommon at all to change a program. I think the criteria that worked well in 1978, by today's standards, especially if you guys had a chance to compare it with Portland's program, I emailed you all that information. It is primitive, it is crude, the financial accounting that we require for the developer is, is at an incredibly rudimentary state. We get one piece of pro forma. That is, I mean, you should see, I have time to discuss what Portland requires, and you will say, oh, well, that's being business unfriendly, that's, you know, putting restrictions on development. Not true. Look, this is Portland. This is, this is multi-applications current. It's pages long. These are all the ones that Eugene Council suspended it in, what they said it was, '96? Look, these are all the ones that filed and got approved since then, and actually, the list is much bigger because this is something like I got from 2008. You can add on a whole bunch of other ones down here at the end. So, so the argument that us doing a very rigorous, suspending it, doing a rigorous review, is not going to slow down business, there will be people lined up. There are right now, we're already on the map. There's people cruising around town right now looking to build another student tower somewhere, I'll guarantee you that. So I, it's not really an unreasonable proposal, and it will not affect business development. Developers in Portland are perfectly happy to work with, with that system, and they get true quantifiable, identifiable community benefits. And our system's not doing that. I think we need to rework it. I'm not saying get rid of it by any means, I'm saying we need a serious makeover.
Betty.
Thanks. I will support the motion. I think it's really important to suspend while we discuss not only how it should be used, but whether we should have a tax exemption. And as to what Alan said about following the rules, the rules do not say that we have to approve any MUPD application regardless of how many points it gets. It's up to us to judge whether it's a clear benefit to the community. And I think the community, the people that I, who talk to me are not at all pleased with the tax exemptions we have given already. One of the most frequent questions I've been asked, and I've talked to a lot of people in recent months, as you may know, was, did you vote for the capstone tax exemption? And I didn't run across anyone who thought we should have voted for it. I think people are, and another thing is, we're about to ask people to approve a tax raise, and people who can barely afford it, and they will say, oh, you give a developer a big tax raise and, and ask me for more money to help pay your expenses. But for now at least, I will strongly support this motion. Thanks.
George Poling.
I have one quick question. We do have one current application, and we're looking at, at least maybe three weeks before we take actual action on this, if it goes. So if we get, receive any more applications, the current one we have and any possible ones that are turned in before, they, no matter what our outcome is, those applications follow the existing rules that are in place today. Is that correct?
The suspension will be a suspension on receiving applications, so in a sense, the answer to your question is yes. But as Betty just said, the criteria for approval of a MUPD is whether the council decides it's in the public interest. In deciding whether you believe it's in the public interest, you can certainly take into account the kinds of changes that you might be discussing over the coming months. It could also be that anybody thinking about submitting a MUPD application, you know, before you can take action on a suspension ordinance, might keep that in mind as well and just decide maybe they'll hold off, because whether it's in the public interest or not is, is a judgment call for you as the elected body to make. So yes, though, it will be processed under the existing ordinance, and state law says if you don't act within 180 days on an application, then it's deemed approved. So we will certainly bring to you action on the MUPD that's been submitted so that you can take some kind of action on it. It will follow the existing process, but ultimately, you decide whether it's in the public interest or not.
Okay, thank you.
Got two more back in the queue, Greg and George Brown. I'm going to say something now, and then we're going to vote. My personal feeling about this is in support of the, of George's motion. I, I think we have to have a better way to analyze the pros and cons and benefits and to give a more accurate picture that's more transparent to the public. One of the things that I'm most concerned about is just what Betty talked about, the continual debate about the viability of, of tax breaks. And from, it's a round and round discussion which goes on every time. It's like, yeah, it's true that you don't have anything that's taxable till you build something, so you may decide to give a tax break so that something is built, so that in a certain amount of years, you'll get some taxes into your community. We have property across from the old library that sat there for 40 years being undeveloped. You can say if it didn't, they didn't get a break, they would develop it, but we certainly have a lot of keen evidence that that didn't occur, and no evidence that it would occur if we just let it languish there anymore. So it's sort of a, it's just a non-ending circle. Will you, are you giving up something if they build something and you don't get it till a period of time, or would it have been there in the first place if you didn't give it to them to build there? So that's, but I do think the thing that's wrong with this is we ought to be rigorous. You all ought to be, feel really good that we had a really good criteria for doing it. The public should fully understand how we are making our decisions, that we think we're getting the most out of it we can for our public. And that's why I think the conversation about MUPD is well overdue, and I think it needs to be a rigorous one. And when we come out the other side, I hope that everybody in the community understands what it is we're trying to accomplish and what we're going to do to put rigor, more rigor into it. So, second round is Greg, and then George.
Very brief comment. Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that has kind of bothered me with my research on MUPD is the alignment with land use plans, particularly the metro plan and applications adhering to land use planning documents, as well as some of the things that we're talking about as vis-à-vis Envision Eugene. So again, you know, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of issues here that, you know, intersect and that the main thing for me, and I'll state it again, is the investment in our community and the value we get back from, you know, these types of projects is very, very critical to me. And I think it's, you know, I agree with Alan that, you know, this is something that we really need to drill down on, and I want to thank George for, you know, bringing that forward.
George, you want to wrap it up, and then we're going to vote?
I think I'll pass, Mayor.
Already? Then we're going to vote. All those in favor of George's motion, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and opposition, 3, it passes. Thank you all, and I think with that, we're finished. Right, okay.